This is Mike Bearish Ford Superintendent of Carmel Clay Schools, proud superintendent. And I want to thank you for tuning in tonight. I know this is that everybody has a busy schedule and and really the purpose of this presentation is just to give some baseline information about the role of school board trustees, a little bit of detail on the logistics of Carmel Clay School Board positions, and the importance of being an informed voter. Now, this is my first webinar, so I'm a complete rookie at this, so please give me some grace and patience as we slug through it, but hopefully we'll be okay. Also wanted to communicate to you that our Director of Community Relations Emily Bauer will be monitoring, answering the questions through that Q and A button that's on your screen. And she'll be answering questions as we go, and we may have some time at the end to answer a few questions as well. Even after the webinar, if you have questions, feel free to contact us here in the office, and we'd like to talk to you and make sure that you have good, accurate information. One of the reasons we decided to do this webinar was for more families and community members to be able to have access to the information. We're recording it tonight so people can watch it when their schedules allow. You know, school board elections, especially on presidential years, can kind of get lost in all the noise and and all the all the hip-hub about all that. But you know, school board elections are really important to our community, our schools for sure, and most importantly, to our kids and their families. So let's get started, and we'll start rolling the slides, and here we go. First off, just got to make sure you understand the rules and some of the laws that we have to follow as government employees, as superintendent schools, teachers, anybody that gets a paycheck from CCS, have to follow some certain rules when it comes to campaigns. And it's IC 314-117, that's the Indiana Code, that means the law, it's a statute. And it talks about what can be, what you can do and what you can't do. So most important ones for tonight is, and I want you to know upfront, that no government employee can knowingly or intentionally use property of the employer's government or the employer to do anything, any of the following, can't solicit contributions. So Dr. B is not going to ask you for money tonight, maybe that's a good thing, I hope so. You can't advocate for the election or defeat of a candidate, so we won't be promoting anybody or being against anybody, this is just all factual information. And then the three there is about the approval or defeat of a public question. That doesn't apply to this coming election, that would be like the last election when we had a referendum, that was a public question. Other, at the end there, you can see same prohibitions, but you can't do it on property. You can't do any kind of promotions on property during regular work hours. So that, you know, that's the rule. So tonight, you're not going to hear from Dr. B who to vote for or anything like that, you're just going to get a lot of information. And now, teachers and everybody, private citizens, you know, they're fine. You have rights as a private citizen, you know, to promote, you know, give contributions, do anything you want. But you just can't do it on school property, on school time, you know, in your role as a government official or as an employee. It's like if you emailed your teacher at school and said, hey, who should I vote for for school board? They can't do that because they can't use their school email address, they can't use their school computer, can't do it during the day. The only time they could talk to you as a private citizen would be on their own time, on their own technology or telephone, not any of the school stuff. So I want to get that out there upfront, so everybody's aware of what the rules are. Okay. I'd be a bad educator if I didn't start with a little bit of history, and so I'll try to make this quick and painless. But being a board member or a school trustee is not a new concept. Matter of fact, the very first one on the far left there was, it started in 1647 in Massachusetts, and that's when the very first laws were made that required towns to establish and maintain schools. So what they called it back then were selectmen, and they were picked and responsible for hiring the and if you look up in the upper right-hand corner, if you're going to build a school, then every able-bodied male who was 21 years or older was required to work one day a week to construct the school building until it was completed. And if you didn't, you would have to pay a hefty fine of 37 cents a day, and a fee for that. So but that's when it all got started, 1647, then you skip up to 1831, here in Hamilton County, that's when we received our very first government subsidization for schools. And so what happened then was the congressional township was led by a board made up of three trustees. So you know, the township trustee concept started then, and they divided up the land, and then there's schools. You know, there would need to create school systems in those parcels of land that they divided up into. It kind of got real here in Carmel in 1869, when the Carmel Academy opened. And you may have, you know, the road just west of Carmel High School is called Richland Avenue, and that's because the Richland Quakers were the, they opened the very first public high school here in Carmel with 47 students at high school, then they had 60 other students in the lower grades. So even back in 1869, Carmel was huge in comparison to the other one-room schoolhouses around. And what I'm really proud of is Carmel Academy opened as a teacher training school. So even then, one of the missions of Carmel Clay Schools was to be a leader and to teach teachers so that they could go into other communities and teach, so that was pretty special. And then finally, in 1962, you know, following the baby boom and then the rest of suburbs, the Clay Township Trustee who had been in charge of the schools transferred the control of the school system to create Carmel Clay Schools, as it's known now, and its first school board of trustees. So it all started really in 1962. So there's your history lesson. One of the commonalities you could see across the four boxes is that really the duty of the school trustee is to take care of the teachers, take care of the buildings, so that the kids can have a good education. All right, we'll go to the next one. A little bit more history, this one's kind of fun. Back in 1964, so you can see this is pretty close to the start. I don't know if this was the original school board, but if not, it was like probably the next cycle up. A guy named Peggy York wanted to be a candidate and wanted to be on the school board, so what did she do? She put an ad in the newspaper, so that's what you'll see on the right there, that ad. And you know, she's got some information about herself, and then, and she also has some endorsements down there below. But the box in the red is printed out there on the left, and she said, Peggy said, "The emphasis should be on a greater school-wide desire for excellence," so excellence. "Curriculum should come under much closer and continuing scrutiny," so two, curriculum. "Three, merit and individual initiative among teachers should be encouraged and recognized in a meaningful way." In other words, must support those teachers. And then communications, both within the school and between the school and community, should be greatly improved. Now, does that sound familiar? Like every cycle, it's school board election cycle, there's always a lot of things about transparency, communication, recognizing teachers' good work, and then, you know, looking at that curriculum and those sorts of things. Now, what really made Peggy one of my heroes was her last paragraph there, where she said, "In general, I feel the school board should be concerned with the fundamental questions and the basis, basic aspects of policy, which is a biggie, and should leave the administration of those matters to those who are hired for that purpose." Like, way to go Peggy, yeah. And but anyhow, it was pretty, pretty interesting that way back in 1964, you know, the more things change, the more they stay the same sometimes. So, next thing I want to talk just about, just briefly about, is that the school board races are nonpartisan. And the reason they are, and have never really, never been partisan, is because we serve all kids. We serve families and students with many, many different languages, of cultures, of races, of religions. Any way that you can, you can show a diverse group of humans, Carmel has it. It's a wonderful thing about our district, we have a little world right here in Hamilton County, and it's pretty special. But last session, there was a bill about making school board races partisan. Now, your superintendent will always, you know, be of the opinion that we need to keep politics out of the school building. You know, what we do is we teach about government, we teach about civics, we talk about the branches of government, we talk about there's a Republican Party that has these values, a Democratic Party that has these values, there's a Libertarian, there's an Independent, all these parties work, and then people get elected, and we talk about majorities and voting and all the different rules of government. We do not teach people to be anything, because that's where our responsibility ends, is to teach about it, and then what you need to be is your job as parents, and watching over your kids and pushing on your family values on those. Same way with politics in school is, you know, my fear would be like if, if, let's say, one party, say the Democrats, get in control and they decide to, that we really need to have a curriculum that follows the Democratic values, and then because there's a majority, that gets put into place, and then two years later, maybe a Republican majority now has control of the board, are we going to have a Republican curriculum? And every two years, are the kids going to go, what's going on here? It's just not good practice, we need to be the place where everybody's welcome, we serve all the kids and the families, we stay and do what we do to educate about things, and then families and the family values is your job. So we'll just see what happens, it may come up again, hope not, and I think the history there is pretty solid, that it's, we need to make school a place for everybody, and I think that would be best. All right, moving on. This is probably the most important slide that we're going to cover tonight, and that's just to give you some real good information about the role of school board and how the Carmel Clay School Board is set up and structured. So we'll start with the Carmel Clay School Board consists of five members, and three of the members represent the three districts in Carmel, in the community of Carmel. The districts run from east to west, and there's a north, you know, a north district, there's a center district, and there's a south district. Now, the last school board election cycle was the three district races. And so the way it's structured is there has to be one candidate from each of those districts that fill three seats on the school board. Now, every citizen voting who's registered to vote in Carmel can vote for all three districts, so everybody votes for everybody. But you have to vote for someone from the north, someone from the mid, and someone from the south. And so that was the last cycle, so that, you know, so there's a four-year term going on right now with that cycle. This coming election in October is for the two at-large seats. And both the, there's no incumbents, and so we're going to hire two new people to go into those two seats. They can live anywhere in Carmel, and everybody gets to vote for those two seats. Another thing about school boards is no school board member has any authority on their own. The only authority that a school board has is when they are a group as a board, and then decisions are determined by a simple majority vote, so three out of five will be the deciding factor if it's a close vote, that sort of thing. So that's the structure of Carmel Clay Schools Board, and kind of the voting structure of it as well. So now let's look at what are the roles, the primary roles and responsibilities of school board. Usually when I ask that question in a group, people look at me like, you know, and sometimes when I read stories to elementary kids, I'll say, hey, do you guys know what superintendent does? And they'll go, uh, no, I don't know. And then I'll say, well, let's ask your teacher, do you know what superintendent does? And then she'll look at me and go like, what do you do? Well, a lot of times, you know, in some of these positions, you know, we don't know exactly how they work and what goes on. So let's talk about school board members. The very first thing I'll discuss is that they're number one, one of their top three written in Indiana Code is their role is to hire and supervise and evaluate, and even sometimes fire the superintendent. School board members have one employee, and the only employee they have is this guy. And then, then it's the superintendent's job to be the administrator of all the other positions in the district and that sort of thing. So it's a huge undertaking, and our boards went through that because I announced my retirement, if you hadn't heard, at the end of the school year, and so they did a succession plan to choose the new superintendent coming in, and that's going to be Dr. Tom O'Stryke, who is currently Assistant Superintendent of Student Services and Human Resources. And I'm real proud of the board, they did a very thoughtful process, and so that's, that's number one has got a check mark by it, that it is a big responsibility in Indiana Code, that is a big job of the board. Second one is policy, and policy is another really important authority that the board has. And so they get to make school board policy, and superintendents, administrators, we cannot make policy. We can make procedures, we can make administrative rules, but we cannot make policy. And the way the structure is, is when the board passes a policy, that's administrator's job, and then specifically the superintendents to make sure that that policy is executed and executed correctly. So policies come from a lot of different directions. Most often, the Indiana lawmakers will make laws regarding, about, you know, that makes schools do one thing or add things, or very seldom take away things. But anyhow, we'll get new laws get put into place, and a lot of those require or even written in the law that you need to make a policy, and then, and that's where a lot of our policies come from. So we work together with the two liaisons from the board to prepare and do drafts of the policies. And then at that point in time, it goes to a board, and the board will do a discussion of those policies, and then once everybody's got all their answers and know all the information, then they'll vote whether to pass the policy or not. Another way policies can come is if the administration, we will recommend a policy because of either a change or something becomes obsolete, and we'll say, hey, we really think we need to change this policy. Again, same process, board will discuss, board will vote. And then the board can have their own, you know, they can come to the table and say, hey, we think we ought to have a policy about, you know, something, and then it goes through the same process, the board will discuss, and the board will vote. So policies is a big deal, and it's a lot of authority, and that's, again, in Indiana Code, it's one of their primary missions. Third one is to approve the budget, and I don't know how many of you guys were tuned in on Monday night for the exciting rollout of the 2025 school budget, but it's a big deal. And, and one of their primary roles as a school board member is to approve that budget. And so that was the first look at it, first time they heard about it, and then there's a step-by-step process by the state to go and work through that until that budget is approved at the local level, then it has to go to the governmental level, and they'll need to approve it as well. So it's a pretty lengthy process. We're fortunate, we have, you know, Mr. McMichael, who's done a lot of school budgets and very talented. Him and his team did a great job, and we'll be moving forward with that. Now, school board, besides the budget, have financial oversight over everything that's spent in the district. So they have to approve payroll, they have to approve claims, they have to, basically, they're the ones who sign the check for anything that we buy and services we pay for and all those things. So again, another great big authority that the board has, and that's in code as well to be the fiduciary overseers of the budget. Last piece on there is the set strategic goals. That's kind of a team thing, where administration usually will, like, I'm kind of excited about this year because I'm laying, we're landing the plane on our last three-year strategic plan. So if your principals and administrators, people that you know in the district look really tired, it's because they have worked really hard these last three years to achieve a lot, in sometimes difficult circumstances. So very proud of the work that's been done the last three years, and this year we're tidying up some of the ones, the loose ends that are still there. And then next year, Dr. O'Stryke will be actually leading, you know, the process for the next three-year strategic goal, and there'll be opportunities for the community to participate in that, I'm pretty sure. But that, so we bring our strategic plan, you know, three-year plan to the board, and we have discussions, the board can recommend some things, we can, we work as a team to try to set that direction point. Also, the board can have their own goals and visions as well, and but most of the time, it's a team effort to try to get a good plan and where we need to go and serve our kids and families at a very, very high level. On the other side there, you see some collaborative appointments, and the schools have the opportunity or the responsibility to appoint three members of the library board. And so those are not board members, those are citizens that we recommend to the library board for appointment. And so that's a big, a big job, and that's typically done through the, either me and the board or the board. Carmel Parks Board, we have one school board member that is on that board. Carmel Redevelopment Commission, we have one school board member who is on that board, they are non-voting, and that's always a topic of conversations every year downtown. But it's really helpful for us to have someone on the CRC because a lot of times the buildings and the planning does impact the school, so we appreciate that partnership. A new one is the Carmel Education Foundation, we now have one school board member that's serving on that foundation board. And then two other things, ISBA is the Indiana School Board Association, and usually the board president is the liaison to that, that's the big professional school board association for the state of Indiana. And then also, we do a lot of communication with legislators regarding educational policy and lawmaking, and usually the board president serves that position as well, but any board member can. And so those are some of the appointments that go through as well. So when you look at this whole slide and see all the different pieces, you can see there's a lot of authority and a lot of leadership involved in being a school board member. So what's the importance of the election? Well, school board members shape educational policy. So you're going to set, the school board, they set policies to directly affect student learning, directly affect school operations. It's just a, it comes with a lot of authority and the ability to do a lot of things that really can affect the day-to-day school day. As discussed before, they oversee funding, so the allocation of budgets influencing everything from research, resources to teacher pay, because that's something we bargain, you know, every couple of years. One of the great things about school boards is they reflect our community values, and they are a pipeline to get information that we can try to keep track of, you know, what we're doing and how it's playing out in the community and getting feedback from the community, that sort of thing. You know, people who have kids in school, we have a direct connection with, and you get a lot of connection, connecting points for information. Folks that aren't, their kids have graduated, that haven't had any kids in Carmel Clay Schools, you know, it's a little more difficult to connect sometimes with those, but they will connect by identifying the school board members because they vote for them. So it's a nice, it's a nice, another nice communication and team thing where we can work together and make sure that all voices in the community are heard, and so that's a really important piece. And then finally, we've talked about before, they select leadership, they're going to hire and evaluate that superintendent, and it really is in charge an awful lot of making sure that the district is running correctly and at a high level that we expect here in Carmel. All right. So one of the questions I get a lot is, Dr. B, how do I know who to vote for? And that's a great question, I've had a lot of people come, you know, I go in the polls, and there's a whole bunch of names, and I don't really know anybody, or I, you know, I don't, you know, I don't know how to even access information about folks. You know, probably the three most important words in assessing school board candidates or candidates in anything is just research, research, research. And the analogy I like to do with this is that it's kind of like when, you know, I spent a lot of years working in human resources, recruiting and attracting teachers, and really anybody that worked in this school. And, and you know, one of the things I did was kind of my guiding principle on that is find successful people. And the way, the easiest predictor of someone being successful at a job is to be, find someone who's been successful at that job. In other words, what, what have they done recently, in the last few years to support, you know, or to do that job, in this case, you're hiring a school board member through your votes. You know, what have you done to support schools? Because, you know, if you go all the way back to in the history of school board trustees, it's about how you support kids, students, the teachers, the school system, how do you support that? So that's a good thing to do, go look and see how, you know, what has been, you know, how you've been contributing to the school in the past. Another piece is, you know, which really become a big thing in school board races now, which is kind of new, last two or three cycles, is political action committees. And so that's another good question, is who's supporting that candidate? There's a lot of different political action committees, some of them are very political, you know, it's all about harsh Ds, Ls, and Is, that sort of thing. Other ones can be just a group of parents and community members that get together because, you know, they want to make sure that this, make sure the referendum passed so we could give our teachers really, really competitive pay and benefits, and that sort of thing. There's also what I call special interest packs, that's because there, that might be a group of people that want something, you know, achieve something specific, or they want something specific to happen in the schools, and so they band together for that. You know, it's not a right or wrong or a bad or good, it's really about what, you know, you have to do your research, research, research to find out what is the purpose of the pack and who are they supporting and why, and does that align with your values and that sort of thing? So that's, that's, you know, another factor that you could look into or research in order to know more about the candidates before you walk in to vote. Last one down there on that is, is the candidate endorsed by people. You saw on Peggy York's ad in the paper, at the bottom, she had a bunch of quotes from different people in the community about Peggy. And so the question is, who's endorsing that candidate? And then, but be cautious again, because you want to know what's the motivation of the individual or the group that's endorsing that person. So there might be some connecting points that are favorable, and there might be some connecting points that you need to, you know, ask a question about. But those are three categories that are probably the areas that are, where you can research, 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 and find out some things about those candidates. Not an exciting thing that's happening, which is very unique, I've never heard this before, but I know it says below their candidate forum on September 30, but it's actually being advertised as a debate. But all four of the school board candidates for the, for the November election are doing a debate on September the 30th at 7 o'clock, that's going to be at the Palladium. Now, you cannot, you got to buy a ticket, you got to get a ticket, but it doesn't cost anything. So if you want to go live on the 30th, you know, you can do that. But I've never experienced in my 43-year career a debate of school board candidates, so that should be very interesting. The other thing that's interesting about it, it's being sponsored by the Current in Carmel, and they're going to, you know, moderate it. But they have, you can submit questions to news@currentincarmel.com, and so you can have questions, you can submit them, and your question might get asked of the candidates or be part of that debate. So very, very interesting. If that's a bad date for you, you're busy or can't see it, I'm sure it's going to be recorded, and you'll be able to look at it later. But a lot of times, it's, it's good to see the candidates interact without, and with, you know, without being a prepared, you know, in advance thing, that they actually interact with, you know, interacting with each other will be really new, but interact with questions from the community can be a great thing to maybe make some decisions on which way you want to go with a candidate. So that's just a little bit about assessing candidates and some areas you can look to. You know, I know the tendency is to Google, and you know, I think that's, that can be useful too. But those are some areas you might look into. Next thing I want to just put is navigating information, and the reason why this one, I kind of, this is kind of a new, new piece for me to add to these kind of presentations is because it used to be, you know, it used to be, if, like, I'd say maybe three cycles ago, if you were going to be a school board candidate and you had a really well-funded campaign, it would be like $1,000, I mean, $1,000 was a lot for a school board campaign. If you were really well-off and had some friends that would pitch in, maybe $1,200, I think that was one of the bigger ones. Biggest one I had, I knew of three cycles ago was like $1,500. And most of that money went to signs and maybe some bumper stickers and that sort of thing. Now, in some of the packs that I mentioned before, they're saying they're raising $100,000, $150,000. Even some of the put-together, you know, parents, you know, it's, you know, not like a huge, you know, huge pack, they're looking for $10,000. So it's, it's a big, big money is being put into these, and that, and you know, you can do a lot of things with more money. There's, you know, slick flyers and You know, you can do a lot of things with more money. There's, you know, slick flyers and. And uh, you'll get a lot of things in the mail, mailers, uh, are pretty expensive. Um, you'll see, uh, you know, some of you probably already getting emails, uh, Facebook posts, uh, all kinds of different uh. Um, you know, ways to to market candidates that we could, with that money. Uh, I don't know how I feel about all that. Um, you know, it's almost like it's saying, you know, your your votes are for sale. You know, if we have enough money, we can persuade a community our way or whatever. Uh, so um, the other thing that comes with this, and you've seen this in in traditional politics more than in school board races, but. Um, misinformation gets put out and uh, you know, if you look at this old news journal here, um. This was front page news, you know, in nineteen seventy-two, Carmel Teachers and Board Reach in nineteen seventy-three Wage Agreement. So the big headline was the teacher contract is settled and how special is that? That lady in the middle uh, is getting a bouquet of carnations from Carmel High School graduate, at a graduation ceremony. Because she was retiring after fifty-one years as a teacher. Uh, and then the, another story, teachers get increase in fringe benefits and um, you know, those things are are. You know, it's nice, that's what you want to see, but unfortunately now with so many um. News sources and hundreds of information outlets and and uh, we've been spending more and more time, um. You know, trying to clean up misinformation that's put out about the schools or about teachers or about all kinds of different things. Uh, it's getting increasingly difficult to figure out what is true. Um, because uh, you know, anybody can say anything and it it gets said enough, sometimes people believe that. So it's hard to do fact checks, I guess, is the way of putting it. Well, uh, the good news is, as a response to that, uh, we as a school district have put a lot of effort into our website. And like, for instance, uh, I'll give you a couple of examples during the referendum, um, there was a rumor going around that we were hiding four million dollars. And we're hiding it somewhere. Uh, we're a government entity, so everything we spend, anything on, has to go on a website and uh, that where it says that uh, spending website. Um, uh, it's on, it's impossible to hide money in a government entity. Because um, everything has to be posted and put on, you know, in the public. Uh, we also get audited every year and so you have to figure that out. But then all of our, you can go to the transparency dashboard and look in our uh, you know, in our finance on our website. And you'll see just a whole bunch of information. If you follow our school boards, uh, they're part of the, we send out a board recap and newsletter every, after every board meeting. Um, once a month, Mr. McMichael does a financial report, tells you exactly how much money is in each fund, how much we had. How how does it look compared to the year before and if it's different, why it's different and if it's the same, it's about the same. Um, so it's a, we get, we put out a lot of information about that. Uh, the other interesting um, misinformation that was going out during the referendum was I was working the polls and a guy came up to me and he goes, I'm voting no for that referendum. And I said, he's kind of angry and I said, well, why? And he said, because I know about your superintendent and that two hundred thousand dollar uh, automobile allowance he has. And I said, the superintendent gets two hundred thousand dollars for an automobile allowance? He goes, yeah. And I go, well, I got bad news for you. I am the superintendent. That gray pickup truck over there is my truck and it didn't cost two hundred thousand dollars. I mean, it's a plain old GMC pickup truck. It's not even a Denali model or anything. Uh, it's still the nicest vehicle I've ever had in my life, but uh, but uh, unfortunately, I say, I think you've been gaslighted. So you've gotten some misinformation, this is not true. Um, but that's the kind of thing that gets out and uh, and so we try to do that. A lot of uh, lot, there's a lot of misinformation about curriculum. If you go to our website and look under curriculum, we have maps there posted with all kinds of information. Um, uh, we just have a lot of information that's accurate. So if you're concerned about something and you hear something and you want, you're not sure if it's true or not, uh, please call our office and uh, let us uh. At least direct you to where the facts are about things like that. Uh, you gotta navigate information and it can get pretty confusing and uh. And so you just gotta keep working. Ironically, this is one of the things we teach in school is how to uh. To figure out what are good sources, what are reliable sources, what is things that are fact checked, what are, you know. Because you don't want to base your arguments on uh, on things that aren't true. So uh, navigating the information, uh, and we're here to help uh, um, again with factual information if as needed. So, here's your takeaways for tonight. Uh, number one is to register to vote. And you can also check your registration, uh, if you're not sure. Um, had, there was a scary, scary statistic that came out in the um, during the uh, the last election for the referendum. Excuse me. And they, that was that like thirty percent of uh, our parent, uh, parents uh, are not registered to vote. And uh, I found that hard to believe, uh, so and I'm still not sure if I believe it or not. Because uh, you know, sometimes statistics can be a little misleading, kind of like the last slide. But it did make me pause and so uh, if you haven't registered to vote, register to vote, it takes like two minutes. You you can register online. Um, and uh, it's right there, vote.gov and uh, you'll know where you can, where your vote at and all that kind of stuff. So uh, register to vote if you haven't. Uh, if you don't register by the seventh of October, you will not be able to vote. Uh, number two, be an informed voter. Um. Uh, here's some statistics, uh, and these are from Sam Houston State University, so I'll give them a little more credibility. Uh, but up to twenty-five percent of voters will skip down uh, ballot races. So in other words, they won't vote for like a school board election. Um, that might be because they're nonpartisan, but. Um, be honest, I think I'd rather have someone not vote if, rather than um, who is uninformed, you know. I prefer to have informed voters vote, but um. But that's, you know, that's a, that's a statistics that's out there. The other one, uh, which is a little scarier is that uh. In in all ballots, the candidate that is listed first alphabetically, uh, has a five to ten percent um, head start on all the other candidates. Uh, so the implication of that is that people will look at the list and they'll just pick the first one. Uh, and uh, that to me, that's a little scary. Um, except for for one candidate, that'd be a good deal for them, but uh. Uh, so yeah, that's just another, um, you know, piece, be informed, research, research, research. And then finally, um, vote, make sure you vote. Uh, I know we're busy, I know that um, you know, our schedules are tight. You know, with with um, early voting, which starts on October twenty-third, actually starts a little bit before that, a couple of locations in accounting. Um, I think the last two or three cycles, um, some of the races were determined before Election Day. Uh, because so many people take advantage of early voting. Um, but um, uh, take the time, uh, the stakes are high and uh, get informed and really need to vote. And of course, Election Day is coming up on the fifth. So, um, to uh, close out here, um, I I threw up this uh, the quote and I've been sharing this. Uh, when I did this presentation, you know, in some PTOs, different places. Um, when I was a middle school assistant principal, um, I was trying to brainwash the kids into making better choices. Uh, because sometimes in middle school, you know, you have, you have a tendency to have some spontaneous moments. And um, so what I did was we would do the announcements every day and then at the end of the announcements, we would have someone, uh, you know, on the staff or a student. Uh, read a famous quote and then they would finish the the, you know, the announcements and the quote with. And this is Dr. Beresford reminding you that the choices you make today shape your world tomorrow. And uh, and so he said that every single day and uh, and I would uh, go into classrooms sometimes and I'd say, hey, guys, you know, the. Choices you make today and they would go, shape your world tomorrow. I mean, it was just a. Uh, you got a little monotonous for I'm sure, but there had been some kids from that junior high who are now parents in Carmel Place Schools. Uh, who have uh, contacted me and said, hey, you know, that choices you make today thing is true. And uh, I don't know if that was good choices or bad choices, probably, but most of us do a little bit of both. But uh, the moral of the story is, is that um, the choices you make. On October early voting and the choices that you make on November the fifth of the election. Uh, really will shape your world and also our kids tomorrow. Uh, you know, they will, they will shape their future. And so um, if I was gonna do one, if I had one message for tonight's webinar, it's just that uh. Uh, this is really, really important to our kids, to our families, uh, to our community. So really take the time to get informed, to make sure that uh, you've done your work and then. Uh, make sure you vote and uh, and uh, that's, that's all we can ask. So that the choices you make, uh, will shape a very positive and continue the great work going on in Carmel Place Schools. And uh, with that, I am finished. Um, I am looking at questions and things I don't see a whole lot. So um, in that case, um, I will sign off. I want to say thank you very much for being here and good night.